Yeah, Antonio's here. All good? All right, everyone rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining. The Board of Education regularly scheduled meeting September 24th. James, attendance, please.
Yep, Dr. Reese.
Present.
Vice President McDonough.
Here.
Secretary Summers here. Treasury Whitney, here. Trustee Schultz is absent. Trustee Atchison.
Here.
And Trustee Aldridge, here.
All right. Are there any changes to the board agenda? None? We had no scheduled, pre-scheduled public comment. Moving on to the consent agenda. Item number four. Minutes of the September 10th meeting, regular enclosed session, HR updates in the August 2024 bills payable. James?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have support? Amanda? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five on the agenda is the policy committee update. We have the annual policy readings, second reading. So I will take a motion to approve those. Looking around. James?
Yep. Move to adopt, I'm sure I know what that was about. Move to adopt policies 3102.01, 3106, 3207, 3211, 3301, 3306, 4106, 4107, 4109, 5212, 5506, 5601, and 5709 as presented.
Do I have support? Amanda? Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just go over briefly. Most of these policies, as you will see, they're straight from TRUEN with some language updates. There is one, every policy that has the .01 means that we have altered it in some way different from what TRUEN has recommended. And so just so that you are aware, for this one, the smoking tobacco products, drugs and alcohol policy, we simply changed the verbiage and removed possession from the adult section, not kids, but just so that we are not holding legal adults to an unrealistic standard. So that was the only change. Everything else is from TRUEN. The other ones are pretty straightforward. We had some more changes in the second reading group, which I can go over when we get there. But if anybody had questions?
I looked at them. Did you have a question, Mike?
I guess just, I guess just to that point, how does that, like, are they allowed to have it on them?
Legally, yes, absolutely.
On campus?
They're over 18, you know, if you think about somebody who maybe has CBD cream, for example, for arthritis issue, or, you know, we could go down a gamut of examples, but so that we are not weaponizing policy against adults.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, can I get, James, for the second one? These are first reading.
Yep, I'll just keep going here. Move to approve the first reading of board policies 3105.01, 5101.01, 5102, 5103.01, 5213, 5301.01, 5416, 5503, 5707, and 5806 as presented.
Do I support? Amanda? And then discussion?
So for these, as you will see, there are a few more .01 policies, which means we had made changes outside of TRUEN's suggestion. So just to give a quick overview for visitors and volunteers, those that were on the board last year will remember, we had changed that to make sure that visiting sex offenders were required to have conditions imposed on being in the building. And that was different from TRUEN's language. So we kept that in. As far as the student expression policy, the change that we made was TRUEN had strictly prohibited student walkouts. And we came up with language that said something to the effect, I don't have it in front of me, but walkout that does not cause interruption to the school day. So we value our students' rights of expression, and especially in this district, we didn't want to make that a complete policy, that it was strictly prohibited. Search and seizure, we had gone through Allison last year, and she approved the changes for that .01. And the attendance policy, we had changed some things because it had required certain doctor's notes and things that most of the principals had come to us and said, this is not realistic, we can't do this. And so we adjusted it to fit. And so, as you'll see, what we came up with there. And the rest were all language change from TRUEN. And then we did end up pulling one to go back to policy committee, so we will bring that back again next time after we have our next policy meeting.
What was the change in search and seizure? Because we don't have the original here, this is just the updated. So let me pull that. Thank you, sorry.
The originals are... Let's see, I don't, there's the red line. Yeah, we still have a red line that would come through. 5103, right here. So Allison had worked on this, and as you'll see, there's changes here where you're talking about witnesses having, identifying the students involved. It is deeper, as you can see, than what TRUEN had suggested.
It was just about turning over a command of law enforcement?
Right, the chain of command, right, with law enforcement? Yes. Thank you for the reminder.
And there was things that had to be turned over to law enforcement, and then there are things that should be, could be, it could be, not should be, and could turn over to law enforcement to respect that chain of command as well. I don't want to be in possession. How much is there to law enforcement say?
Right. Okay. Any other questions?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll bring those back for second reading next meeting. Item number six on the agenda is finance and operations. Mr. Fitzgerald.
What about governance?
Oh, governance committee, I skipped one, I'm sorry. All right.
Just kidding, John.
Just kidding, John, sorry.
I need the exercise.
I wrote right over top of it, I apologize, so. Well, chairwoman of the governance committee. All right, I'll keep going.
So we had governance last week. It's Erin, Mike, and I on Aldridge on that one. And we picked up where we left off. We had a bit of a gap since the last time that we met. And so we really picked up on our operating procedures and how we are going to structure it. We looked at other districts and best practices of that, and worked together to get a nice cohesive layout that we'd like to see, which includes, you know, the procedures for becoming a board member, standards of conduct, how our meetings are operated. And it really, it's, it's not just for us, it's for the community, for potential candidates. It's going to be a great resource for all of us to be on the same page when it comes to governance of the board. And it answers a lot of questions that people may have, as far as where to find, what's the chain of command. And so that's basically what we went through this meeting. We have scheduled another meeting, and we have scheduled one per month through the end of the year. I think most of our committees are going to do the same thing. And that way, we're hoping by January that we have something that we can bring and onboard our new members and structure our meetings for next year, so that we're on a set pace of certain topics. Every year in May, we'll look at this part of the district every year. And so that way, everybody knows what to expect for the whole coming year. So if you have questions on certain topics, you know ahead of time when it's coming to the board and to prepare yourself. And it also helps, you know, our anti- even leadership, so that they understand fully. I think that was a pretty good synopsis. Anything to add?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, now, John. To cheer for us.
Good evening in your board packet tonight. Is the draft first reading for a resolution to join MYLAF, the Michigan Liquid Asset Fund. We talked a bit about, a little bit about a last board meeting. And just in summary, it's a, the MYLAF funds, it's a professionally managed local government investment pool. It's very similar to a money market with a few different changes because it involves school entities, because, and we're governmental entities, because it has, hence the name government, local government investment pool. It does comply with all the state laws relative to allowable investments. The all-school districts are limited to a certain set of types of investments, such as US treasuries and things of that nature, what we can invest in. It builds its fund, its pools, its portfolios using those laws. Primarily, they do what most of the rest of us do when there's a smaller amount to be invested, or some of the banks do, using commercial paper and other, you know, top-tier rated investment vehicles. It does provide an investment alternative for school districts, that's really its history. It was established back in the 80s. The MESB, MSBO, and Mesa, Mesa organizations partnered with a couple of bigger school districts in the state and created this pool, investment pool. They established a declaration of trust, established bylaws. The goal of it was to create competitive pressures on local banks from a, from a perspective of, at the time, banks were not playing very fair with school districts when it comes to the fees and transactional fees they were charging. But, and they were all acting almost in a sense of collusion. So the group got together, created this fund, and created competitive pressure. And over the decades, it's done quite a good job in terms of putting that pressure on. It currently provides a competitive yield that's really in the last two years, since interest rates have started coming up off the floor, its current cash management yield is about 4.99% net yield. It's, it's got a max class of investment, it's about 4.13%, if I'm remembering that off my head from this morning, which seems a long time ago at this point in the day. So competitively speaking, comparatively speaking, those are net yields, so those are the actual yield and investment that the investing districts receive. There's about 425 local districts participating in the fund. There's also some community colleges, counties, and a couple of counties, a couple of townships. So it's all government-based and dominated by the pool, by the, by the school districts. It's just grown over the years, so to speak. There's several ISDs, 50 some ISDs, I think all of the ISDs are in it, in terms of investment pool as an, as an alternative, investment alternative. So from a rationale and the thought behind why we want to look at it is, the current environment we're in and operating in, it creates an alternative for moving some money into a different type of investment that's actually going to be higher yielding than we're currently getting. Oxford Bank would continue to be our center, money center operating bank. MYLAF would be used to create a secondary place to do some investments, and ideally improve on some of the returns relative to the banks. They operate in two different worlds, so it's understandable from a competitive, competitive investment return point of view. But more importantly, at least from my perspective, it creates a secondary place that we can put some funding in should we run into a cyber issue where we can't get access to some funds at one of, one of the institutions, or if there's an FDIC issue with, let's say, our current operating bank, and I'm, and by no means I'm implying that about Oxford, but my, my mind and practice goes back, back to about 2008, '09, when we had the real estate taxable value crash, and banks were being seized up, so to speak, in terms of restricting on what you can get out of those banks. The lesson I learned from there was to make sure you've got funding in multiple points. So from a making payroll point of view, even if a bank has got to have a visit from the FDIC folks, they usually sit on their asses for 72 hours or more, and if it lands on a payday, you're going to have a problem. So from, and then with today's world, with all the stuff going on from a cyber perspective, cybersecurity perspective, who knows what kind of real threats are out there in terms of any institution, in terms of, you know, let alone money-based institution. So, and from that perspective, from a strategy point of view, more than one places of having and funding around, it kind of diversifies the, and diminishes or helps mitigate the risk associated from having the ability to make payroll or having some funding tied up because of some, excuse me, outside issue. So from the statistical point of view, the funds portfolio, it's themselves carry all standard and pores, triple A, triple A M rated ratings, the little m is specific to the money market class. Like I said, this is very similar to a money market operates 99% the same way as they do. There's a few tweaks because it's governmental entities involved. And from a governance point of view, there are, I believe at this point, 15 trustees on the board. Permanency to trustees involve the executive directors from MESB, Mesa, MSBO. There's a requirement to have at least a minimum of one board member being a board, a member from one of the school boards, a member of school boards. The rest of the seats are at large, but contained to the business slash superintendent personnel of the districts that belong to the fund. So the 15 folks are really all school and K-12 oriented people who have oversight in the fund. And so many specifics about the fund, its investment balance in total portfolios breached $9 billion not too long ago, as we move it deeper into the summer, fall, as school districts start depending upon their savings to make payroll, because the way our state aid system works, that usually dips at that time of year. I have a very long personal history with the fund from the perspective of, I was a trustee on the fund for over 18 years. I've held every role on the fund, from chairman to audit chair to trustee or treasurer, in terms of all the roles that we are, can be done and responsible for within the actual trustee structure. So I have a tremendous amount of confidence in the way the fund is ran, runs on a quarterly meeting basis. There's a, from a perspective of how the money management aspect goes itself, it's a contracted relationship with an organization called PFM. Actually, I think the acronym is now PFM. BAM, they've become a subsidiary of US Bank for the bulk of the time that I've known them. They're standalone, independent, known as PFM. PFM also does some other services, but in this case, it's their PFM Investment Advisor Group. In terms of, the operating goes on there, there's actual, from the engagement from the trustees' point of view, we would on a quarterly basis meet for three to four hours meeting, and literally kick the tires and everything, everything from having the trustee, or the, having the investment advisor report back as to the conditions of their actual organization, whether it was when they were standalone, or whether with their relationship with US Bank now, all the way down to fee structures. One of the roles of the trustee, or excuse me, of the treasurer, was to actually do a parallel calculation so that, so we were conscious of, and they were conscious that we were always watching how they were doing the math. So from a protective point of view, the tagline from the fund, from a marketing and tagline point of view, it's, it's always been described as the sleep well fund. It's primarily focuses on principal preservation with a fair yield, but not one you got, you have to worry about in terms of how we're going to get in trouble from an investment point of view. So hence the sleep well fund. Let me see if there's anything else I can share with you that would be from a pertinent information point of view. And any, any questions that you have, I'd be more than happy to answer. If I can't answer it specifically now, I'll take it down and get back to you prior. This, again, is first reading. But from an overall strategy point of view, we would use a deployment of what I refer to as free cash flow, within our bank account structure that's currently at Oxford, and put them in investments there, particularly when property taxes come in associated with debt. There's usually a very long four to six month window before you need that money. So you can establish a longer term, better rate by doing that kind of investment versus keeping it at the operating bank. Typically, you can. So typically, the operating bank itself, Oxford has a earnings rate structure that is not, it's not a clean interest earning mechanism, it's more about internal earnings that they credit us against internal fees that we generate. So it's, it's hard to compare one to one from an investment point of view on the books. So to be fair to Oxford, what we'll show is, investment return will be much lower on the current books relative to this, the return that we'll be getting from the MYLAF world. But that's because it's done in an earnings credit approach. And if you let me go too deep in the weeds on that, I will take you there, but I know it's a long night, and I don't want to put anybody to sleep on it, but if you, I'd be happy to talk to more about it, and more now if you like, or at a different time, and how all that works. If you have any questions, thoughts, concerns, I'd be more than happy to do my best to field them now, and if I can't answer them adequately now, I'll get back to you tomorrow with answers.
Yep, I have some. How much are you considering putting into this fund?
Well, from a strategy point of view, working from backwards from where we're at with Oxford, and how much earnings credit we're earning, typically you would keep the amount of money, maybe a little more, in that bank to generate enough earnings credit to pay all of our transactional fees costs. So that's the trade there, you're getting credit against fees, so we're not incurring any banking fees because it's traded out based on the bank balances we have there. So there's a certain level of money you keep there to generate the maximum earnings credit to pay those fees off. Once you breach that number, then that money becomes eligible for, do we want to deploy it in a different funding investment, whether it's, excuse me, the cash management fund, which does not have any time requirements on it? Excuse me again, you can literally put money in it over the weekend and pull it out Monday. There's no penalties for that or anything. There's secondary class, the second class investments called the max class. Ideally, they want you to keep it there for 14 calendar days, so it gives them a longer timeframe to invest that money on the backend in terms of the fund operation. But if you actually needed it back, say in 10 days, I have yet to see in 20 years interacting with the fund, them charge a fee, like, comparatively speaking, if you had a CD, if you bought a CD and you had to break it early, there's usually a penalty involved for doing that, you know, 50% of your interest earned, or something like that. That doesn't, I have yet to see that actually happen at MYLAF. But it is, they do make it in the write-up, that it may happen. I've yet to see it happen. So those would be the primary two investment vehicles we'd be utilizing. So if, what I refer to as free cash flow is that, so the amount of money that's a certain percentage above what we need to create our earnings credit at the bank would be eligible for investments. It's not to say we'd move it all over there tomorrow, because really it boils down to our working capital needs, in the quickest way to, most operatingly efficient way, to keep them in-house, i.e. at Oxford, or deploy it at another investment opportunity. So hopefully, I'm not sure I talked around here.
You could give a range, you know?
Well, it could be, it could be...
What I'm getting at is, is this FDIC insured?
No, it's not. It's only banks that have any FDIC insurance.
So how much potentially? Because you brought up a good point with the cybersecurity, I mean, that could hit anybody.
Right.
That could hit this fund, that could, that could hit anybody. But the difference is with Oxford Bank, where FDIC insured.
Well, we're FDIC insured up to $250,000.
Okay.
And we have a lot more than that there.
Okay, so what's the range that we're looking at?
So we would still utilize, I really, let me give you a better answer on that tomorrow.
Sure.
I don't want to, because it's really a matter of taking the hard look at, what do we need in terms of our current obligations at Oxford, what makes sense for our working capital needs? So there's, I always think in terms of fund balance. My last role at Lake Orion, I knew that roughly 8% of the fund balance, we had, we had about a 10% fund balance. We needed the first 78% to use as working capital to make payroll. So I never deployed that long-term money. The amount above that went into longer-term money to get a little bit better rate, like I'd use the max fund instead of the regular cash short fund. So it's kind of dependent, so I haven't done that analysis yet in terms of that slice that I refer to as the free cash flow yet. I would imagine there's probably 3, 4 million we move. And then when it comes to, then we get the property tax waves coming, because in, at Oxford here, we're, most of our levy is a 50/50 summer/winter related to property taxes. So the property tax is specifically levy for paying debt. We would look at it using on a longer-term investment cycle, tying it to when those debt, those bond debts are due. So those would be typically longer, and those going to be, that'll be a more definable amount. But I haven't yet broken down that math on it yet.
Okay. And maybe you haven't on this either yet, but if you could, comparing the two in return on investment, I know you talked about Oxford Bank, and it's, will be a smaller amount. I'm just unclear from looking at the website and reading about it, it looks like on a, on a five-year, it's about a 2.24% return on the MYLAF. Can you give us an idea of what, how that compares to, to Oxford Bank, and...
So on the, on the five-year, the five-year that they're showing on the MYLAF website is just a five-year history of returns. We can't, as a school district, invest for five years, five-year vehicles. There's a time limit based on the state law. That's more of a history of what the five-year rates were, averaging out over those five years. And if you think back even two years, even literally six months ago, eh, maybe, maybe two and a half years ago at this point, when interest rates were two basis points, that's added in there. So in terms of bank world, we were probably getting one basis point on our funds. But we always negotiate deals that are earnings credit based, so they give us a credit against our existing fee. So that, that's a reduction in cost as opposed to a generation of revenue. So that's the piece that we'd be comparing. So that's why I say we would keep that amount of money to maximize that tool at Oxford Bank. And then the, any funding above that, we'd be looking at from an investment strategy, when do we need this slice of it, when, what works best for working capital, what works best for paying debt service, those things. So to do a one-to-one comparison, it's, it's almost an apples and oranges, but in terms of maximizing the return on investment, MYLAF will be materially higher than Oxford. So in a normal interest rate time, which I think we're going to eventually get back to there, hopefully, short-term money at a bank is probably 2% to 3%, you can get a CD for 5% or 6%. At MYLAF, the normal return is 3% to 4% because they use commercial paper, repos, overnight products that are, they yield better, and they have, to be fair to the bank, they have a different flexibility in how they do their investment, maturity planning in terms of what they've got invested in. So it's just, it's almost an unfair comparison in that regard, but from a district point of view, I'm not, I don't want to put us in the position, or sound like I'm putting us in the position of choosing one over the other. We would use both facilities to maximize the district's benefit, whether it's a reduction of cost or an increase in interest revenue.
Gotcha.
So I mean, I don't want to sound like I'm dodging your question, just kind of like...
No, 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 it's very helpful, thank you. Do you know, because I was unclear with those rates, does that include management and administrative fees, or is that before?
Yeah, no, that's the net yield.
Okay.
So this morning's net yield on the cash fund, the cash class, is 4.99%. So when I say net, the gross yield was probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 5.15%. I'm going to do the math there, less than that, maybe 5.9, 5.09%. The, the, the way that PFM makes its money is much like, everybody's seen those commercials for Fisher Investments, same kind of thing, they take the money, it's stratified into the first 500 million that they're managing, they make eight basis points on it. And a basis point, there are 100 basis points in 1%. So they're making eight over 100 of a 1% in terms of that 500 million. The next 500 million, it drops to seven, the next billion, it drops to six and a half and beyond it, to six kind of thing. So it's a tiered, the bigger they grow the pool, the more we'll benefit, because the overall average cost then drops, and our net yield goes up. So to the long, long answer to your question, the rates they, I mentioned are the net yields that the district receives.
Okay, thank you. Last one, sorry. So your experience with them has been with PFM, but they've been acquired by US Bank.
They haven't been acquired by US Bank. Can you say that?
What's the...
PFM has been acquired by them.
Yes.
Not the fund.
So does, have you noticed, does that material, materially change their structure? What, does that affect...
When they, they took them over, I'm going to say 2021?
Yeah.
Maybe, was that three, four years ago now? The concern of the board, and I was on the board at the time, was just that, we don't, we, we like, when I say we, MYLAF wanted the PFM because they're good at what they do, they're very, they're, they're, they started as a, literally a back office shop several years back, grew up to be one of the biggest in the country in terms of managing local government investment pools, specifically local government investment pools, like, they probably got 20 of them under management. And US Bank has next to zero in terms of LGIPs, local government investment pools. They've got experience in money market funds, and there's a little difference. The ones, money markets are SEC rated and managed, local government investment pools are not, but this fund chooses to follow the same rules. We concluded with them years ago that at some point, they're all going to merge and follow on the same rules. So we make sure, we being the trustees of the board and making... So we made sure, we being the trustee, trustees of the board, made sure the management, investment managers were doing things that would comply to, to the point where we thought everything was going. And then we still think, they still think it's going to be managed that way down the road. But at any rate, we, having the same concerns, we've had many meetings with them and what's actually been installed in some of the meetings are, we make them do, or I'm not on the board anymore, they make them do report outs on a position by position, how things have changed, the rationale for change to meet that concern. By the time I left, I just got off the board effectively last December, this past December, they haven't changed anything. There's a couple of personnel changes. Two long-term people at PFM retired, the actual, one of the actual founders, and one of the other, not too long after, director partners did too. I don't know, the one I understood, the other one was a little, he's not, I mean, he's not that much older than I, I guess I'm, I guess I can, if I was in his shoes, maybe I would retire. But they, they, they bought that fund because they knew, U.S. Bank knew they didn't have the expertise and they wanted that expertise under their umbrella. And part of the agreement for the sale was, we run things, we're successful because we run things this way. And they had to commit to running things that way. We're confident they're going to stay that way, or the fund trustees are confident it's going to stay that way. But in my mind, the reality, at some point, U.S. Bank's going to have to put U.S. Bank stamp on how they do things. So the board still runs a review of how things are done and they have, they're not shy about saying to PFM, if they get, become too, if they become concerned about what U.S. Bank's doing to them in terms of the management model, they will immediately go out and do an RFP and bring in a new investment manager. So they're not, they're not, there's no apprehension whatsoever to protect the fund. And if the, because they're just a contracted investment manager, even though they've been there a long time and under a few different formats, independent and owned by U.S. Bank, if they're not doing a good job, they'll be kicked. They'll be, they'll be kicked out and beat out and brought back in to someone else who will do with the way it's wanted to be structured because it's been a very successful fund. It's met and exceeded all its goals. And I think just by the nature and the number of actual public schools they're utilizing, 85% of its public schools, it's got to be about 425 districts. So I'm, I'm not concerned about that. But at the same time, we, they've got eyes on them still.
Thank you.
Yeah.
My only comment is, so we have another finance committee prior to, if we were to approve this at the second reading, could we get in, a little bit more in the weeds on the analysis component of it at that meeting? So when we come back for the second reading, we feel a little bit more aware of what that looks like.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. From an analysis point of view, like an immediate strategy perspective.
Yeah. Yep. I think that'd make us feel a little bit more comfortable with it. All right. If someone is willing to make the motion for the first reading, does not approve anything tonight, we'll review it at the October 4 Finance Committee and then we're back here October 15 for the second reading and we'll give a finance update prior to that. So, all right, Amanda?
I move to approve the first reading of the resolution to join the M I L A F plus fund as presented.
Do I have support? Mike Whitney? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number seven, safety in school operations. Dr. Williman, School of Choice.
Hi. So I brought the School of Choice letter, the memo that needs to be read and then approved at the next meeting for the School of Choice window for the second semester. So we have K through five, which would be unlimited seating based on current enrollment. School of Choice enrollment window would open November 12 and close November 26 for seated. Oxford Middle School, sixth through eighth grade, and Oxford High School, ninth grade, unlimited seated. School of Choice enrollment will open January 6 and close January 20. And then Oxford Virtual Academy, kindergarten through 11th grade, virtual. School of Choice enrollment will open January 6 and close January 20 for virtual.
Thank you, Allison. We did have a, a community member reach out and ask a bit about the process for School of Choice. Could you go over? You had a great response. I would just like you to go over.
Sure, I should have printed that email out. It's an application and they put down where their, their preferences for what campus they're going to go to. That is based on what current enrollment is. And then we also leave room in case there's anyone who could move into the district. And of course, we want to stay with, within the contractual limits. So that does mean classes that are on the larger side, just because you selected that campus, doesn't mean that's where you're placed. It's based on where there's room at the time. And then we do have some, some classrooms that are at that limit and have been at that limit since summer. So if they listed that campus as their first choice, we're going to go to choice number two. And then it, on our website, there's a really good explanation of what paperwork you need as well as our timelines. And this is based on, within like the law and our policy. So it's not, we're not picking dates out of the sky. And then having you approve it is another piece of it. And then we also look at any prior discipline that they've had, which aligns with our policy and the law of expulsions or suspensions within the last two years. And so our enrollment specialist, Kathy Rastigui, does a really good job of being able to ensure we have all the paperwork at the right time to be in compliance, but also that we have all of the information we need so that we're not approving someone who may have prior discipline that goes against what our policy is.
Thank you. Great. Appreciate that, Allison. All right. Number eight, Kelly, do we have any unscheduled public comment?
None.
None. All right. Item number nine, we will be going into closed session tonight. Do I have a motion? Someone willing to read it? Anne? All right. I looked at you and nominated you, sorry.
Move to meet in closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Sections 8E and H, to consult with its attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with case numbers 12-1492, 23-1484, 23-1490, 23-1483, 23-1563, 23-1493, 23-1560, 23-1489, 23-1565, 23-1494, 23-1564, 23-1487, 23-1561, and 23-1496 pursuant to MCL 15.28E, and to consider an attorney legal opinion which is material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state and federal statute pursuant to MCL 15.268H.
Do I have support? Amanda? Roll call vote, James?
Whitney?
Yes.
Summers, yes. Adgerson?
Yes.
Alberd?
Yes.
McDonough?
Yes.
And Reese?
Yes.
It is 7:08 PM. We are entering closed session. All right. It is 8:33 PM. We're returning from closed session. Next item on the agenda is the scheduled activities. Administrative clarification, Dr. Milligan is not here. Final board comments. I do want to thank Anne and Amanda for joining me in Lansing last week to talk to some legislators about bills that are in process in school funding. Those who we did get to connect with, I thought was great, including our own Senate Representative, Ruth Johnson. We thank her for taking time to have lunch with us. She spent probably a good 60 minutes with us, which was nice. Other than that, is there anything else from the rest of the board? All right. Meeting adjourned, 8:34. Have a great night.